For April 28, 2025 to order, we have just one item on the agenda. RDG Conditions Assessment Report for 112 South Third Street. And we're going to turn it over to Scottney. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Everyone else joining us today, thank you for your time. My name again is Scottney Fenton. I am an architect with RDG Planning and Design, Des Moines, Iowa. I specialize in historic preservation projects and buildings across the state. I was delighted to be invited to tour this building and get an in-depth look into its conditions. And I'd love to talk to you more about that tonight. It'll be pretty straightforward, but we'll have time for some questions tonight and discussion. No problem. I usually have a report with an executive summary at the beginning. I've got some good news on this building. Overall, it was found to be well-maintained. It's not a surprise since it's been occupied continuously for over 150 years. We looked specifically at the structure, foundation, walls, roofs, and found those to be in fair to good condition. Therefore, I did not recommend any immediate repairs that needed to happen in the next few months. Priority repairs, I would categorize 12- to 24-month time period. Looking at some of the siding to be maintained, replaced, or repainted. Some additional structure to the roof. We'll talk about that in a little bit. And a little bit closer look at the siding. We found that though it was replaced a few years ago, it was ready for more maintenance. I understand the future plans may include tearing down some of the additions. We'll talk a little bit about that as well. The building was placed on the National Register of Historic Places about 20 years ago. At that time, it was a general rule of thumb. Anything that was 50 years old or older would be considered historic. So I think that's good news for us because the additions were built after 1954. If we were putting it on the register in 2025, one of those additions might be considered historic. It depends on how you write the nomination. But where we're at right now, they're not part of the historic building. To get listed on the National Register, you need to meet at least one criterion. This met two. Due to the events that took place at the city hall and school. It was also a distinctive representation of architectural design. Now, listing alone on the National Register does not place specific burdens on what you can, can't do. Unless you're using some type of federal funding, then there are some restrictions. I don't think, in my opinion, that taking the two additions off will be a problem. We want to stay away from significant changes to the character-defining features. That would be the shape of the building. It'd be the windows, window locations. Based on what I've seen and the care that's been put into this building so far, I don't see that as a problem coming up. Repairing the building is not going to diminish the character-defining features. Citizens of Pope City know this building very well, sitting on the town square. These are the two additions. And I like to include a timeline of specific events. In my mind, the construction would be a specific event, 1863, converted to city hall, 1894, and the rear addition constructed in 1915. That makes the bulk of the historic building. You can see the two additions on the northeast and southwest. We were able, with the help of the city, to take off some of the siding. This is by the front entrance. And those are the stairs, outside stairs to go upstairs. We found some of the 1863 construction still remaining. That heavy timber construction was all hand-hewn. That was found to be in good condition. We'll still recommend some repairs to that. But I've seen a lot worse. Now, the stone foundation, I did not see any mortar. And it appeared to me that that was a dry stack stone foundation, which works very well if you know what you're doing. The pyramids in Egypt were dry stacked stone, so it can hold up very well. There are some advantages to it. Exciting, again, to go inside and look at some of the timber construction. Some of this likely dated to when the building was remodeled into a city hall. We have the sill plate timber there. You see where some of the floor members were cut into that at one time. The floor was lowered, so those were taken out. That vertical log timber actually had some of the bark left on it. It's just a shortcut because no one's going to see it again in 100 years. Now, when I put this together, I thought it would be very neat to have this window into the construction method for future generations. And I'd like to think about that. We see that sometimes, let people know what's behind the wall, what went into the construction of the building. The photo on the left is some of the trim from the correction 2009 restoration. That's starting to deteriorate. We'll recommend some of that be repaired or replaced. And on the right is some of the siding from the addition. If the addition's taken off, then we can put less effort into it. Again, it's just a standard rule of thumb. Keep the water out, keep the animals out. That's just a long-term maintenance school. My engineer's not here with me. I had a structural engineer on the site as well, Jim Tomatic. We partner with him on a lot of historic buildings across the state. That was his level there. He noticed some wavy floors. Put it simply, although we did not feel that that was a danger to anyone or that it was going to get any worse. Very stable and not unusual for a building of this age. That was on first floor. These flooring finishes have been replaced since 1863, of course. And upstairs is the meeting space. Again, some waviness to the floor, but nothing too dramatic. Now, this finish is probably dating from the 1915 addition and remodeling. If you haven't been under the balcony, this is what it looks like. It's a crawl space, so to speak. 1915 addition was when this back of the building was put on. Upstairs in the attic, looking towards the back of the building. This is where we entered above the second floor at the bell tower location. You can see some of the historic wood pegs there as part of the joining methods. All 1863 timbers. The roof raptors look a little newer than 1863, don't they? Some of the framing for structure underneath the bell tower held three of us at one time, so pretty good shape. You can see a lot of bird wrappings. That means the animals are getting in at one time. Not unusual, but we want to keep them out, too. Another close-up of the bell up there. Look to be in good shape. Structure framing for the bell again. One of the recommendations are to install collar ties at the framing for the roof. This is a little bit of a belt and suspenders method, and we'd recommend it for long-term use. I think these are pretty straightforward to install without turning the roof off. These are examples of metal ties and other belt and suspenders. Structure, keep everything held together. Just over time, some of these connections can get weak over the last 150 years. So we recommended some additional support. We did see some spots where the wood had deteriorated. Over time, it got wet or insects got into it. Especially on the sill plate, we saw some bore holes, worms, but nothing too dramatic. Sometimes we use an epoxy. This is a commercial example of Abatron. We've used that on a lot of historic buildings. It means we don't have to replace the whole piece in total. We can add that and strengthen it. And the repairs won't be seen from the outside or by the general public. I thought a little bit about the siding as well. And in 2009, you had some wood siding replaced with real wood, and that's a great way to go. Sometimes we use a substitute material if we feel it's close to the ground and gets a lot of splice black. If there's no gutter and downspout system, all that water runs off the side of the roof and splashes back off and hits the ground. So in that matter, some of that siding can get wet pretty quickly. I served on the Des Moines Historic Preservation Commission for over 20 years, and we did consider alternate materials and allowed that in many situations. Cement board would be an example of something that can get a little more wet and not deteriorate. I do recommend not using that grain, that wood grain finish, because that's not really very historic. And we never allowed that in our neighborhoods. Now, sometimes the new cement board will look a little too nice. And we just have to weigh that. I'm not going to go through the whole recommendations tonight on the finishes, but something to consider. If it's going to be a painted finish, whether it's wood or whether it's cement board or a different material, we would consider what the final appearance would be. Well, I'm coming down to the finish line here. I don't know how well this was received a couple of years ago, but this is an example of the IEDA assessment report. You may remember that showing the elevation. The addition's been taken off, and this particular artist, I think it was Dennis, had shown a potential infill project to the right of the schoolhouse. How that might appear to the downtown square there. As an architect, we like to have a series of buildings surrounding that type of public square. And this is an example of that. We have provided a PDF report with many more pictures in it. And all of what I talked about is in that report. And we can make that available upon request.
Okay. Questions? You're ready for questions?
That's all for my observations. What's that again?
I was just asking. You look like you were ready for people to ask questions.
Well, you know, we have such a great crowd here. I knew that was inevitable. So maybe the council can start with questions, whatever you feel comfortable with, Mayor.
Okay, great. So, council, any questions?
Great information. Thank you. I think, I mean, there are questions about, you've laid out the priority. The biggest question I have is, what do we want it to look like? My personal preference, as I think we talked about, would be, I didn't know the dates before, but as close to the 1863 version of this that we have, which would obviously include removing the additions. Do we know, I'm looking at the Historical Society folks, do we have any images of, how far back do our images go?
Late 1880s. I think we do have a 1908 that would be the original structure with the stage.
Okay.
In a correction, the south addition, that was not put in until '74. In '64, they took the back end and made a couple stalls for the par. So the south addition was '74.
Okay.
Okay.
Good point.
It's good to hear that there's nothing structural or catastrophic with anything. So I guess, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead to a different topic about what we do with this information, but...
So I just had a quick question for you. And it's really only because I'm interested. You showed us the timber on the foundation, and then you said it had, and it had stones under it. How deep do those go into the ground?
The depth of the stone foundation, that would be a educated guess. They did not go typically three feet down like we do today. I have, we had a project at Living History Farms. That's an example of something built about the same time. And we had archaeologists out there on that project. It was only about a foot and a half deep. So that's what I would expect to see. You were not going to go full of frost line, I would very much doubt.
Okay. And so I get the impression that there's no concern about that at all?
We did not see any concern about that at all.
Good to know.
Yeah, I think this is helpful again. It's helpful to know before we would do anything that we don't have a building that's, you know, got big unforeseen problems on the inside. So that's helpful to give that assessment. I'm glad that you were able to give that assessment, but then kind of help us focus on the more priority areas. It'll help with long-term sustainability for the building.
It's a great resource to have a building of that era here in Iowa. It's very uncommon, I think, in my opinion, to see that still available for future generations to enjoy. The big city downtown, nothing ever is that old.
This is good news. Glad that everything that you pointed out was basically either things we already knew about or things we probably could have guessed at. And most of the things that we're going to need to do are pretty minor repairs. A couple of questions. The epoxy wood fill, is that like a breathable epoxy that's going to, a permeable epoxy that we're going to have to worry about more water intrusion as well? Or does that seal, seal it off?
The epoxy that I talked about, Abatron. I go back. A pretty picture. And I...
Looks like Slide 17 there.
Sorry. Well, it's a several, it's a two-part component. And before we even put that in, we put a wood hardener into the soft wood to, as the name implies, harden it up. And then it, the epoxy really takes the place of any material. It's not meant to keep water out, but just to substitute the wood that's been missing or had to be taken out because it was now sawdust. I think type of product is at my home, on my shelves, my window shelves that are...
I've used similar products before. I guess my question is more, and mine hasn't been in place long enough to have worried about this yet, but does having that there cause what's around it to deteriorate quicker as moisture accumulates at that surface and doesn't necessarily go into the epoxy? If you don't know the answer to this, that's perfectly fine, too.
You're asking about the adjacent?
Yeah, the adjacent wood that's being, that is up against the epoxy filler. Does that deteriorate quicker than other wood? As that water hits the epoxy, doesn't necessarily go anywhere and just sits?
Yeah. It only recommended to replace what's on it, and I haven't seen any deterioration of adjacent wood.
Okay.
Again, keeping the water out. So if there was a problem existing that was getting the wood wet, we need to address that first.
I guess the only question I have, sir, is of the four priority repairs that you've listed, are they listed in any specific order of priority or are they equally weighted?
I grouped them together. Our priority repairs. Get a bigger screen here for you. Not much. I didn't, I didn't list them one to four.
Okay.
They were lumped together. Let's see. If I had to lump them, if I had to order them, I I always think keeping the water out would be higher priority. Everybody has a budget to work with, of course. So I would have to recommend that, keeping the water out.
Okay, thank you.
I have two more questions for you. One is, there was nothing in the report about the stairwell. I know that we've done some replacement on that stairwell of some of the steps that were bad. Did you find that stairwell to be okay?
The exterior stairwell.
Yes.
I didn't look intensely at that stair, I'll be honest with you, Mayor. And I didn't feel any immediate concerns about it right now. I may have missed something, but I hear you that it's a maintenance item that because it's exposed wood, needs replacement of some of the components.
Okay. My second question is, the two add-ons. In your report, you said you'd have to be careful about removing those add-ons so that you didn't impact the existing structure. Does that require a specialist to come and do that or just a careful person?
I would say careful. Get your crews on board with the importance of what they're doing because once you dig into it, it'll have to be disassembled, kind of like the opposite of how it was built. They're going to have to be very careful, taking all the roofing off and the roof sheathing. They're going to get a little better look at how those ractors were held into the existing building. It's going to take a little more time. Nothing more than that, really.
Okay. Jeff, did you have anything? We've got some people from the Big Creek Historical Society out here in the audience. I don't know if they have any questions. You don't have to. I just don't know if you do.
Or corrections?
Any questions?
Well, we were told we couldn't talk, so...
Well, you can talk. What's your question?
The question is, we are applying for funding for painting.
Okay.
So does that need to be at all put on hold or the siding issues will be part of the painting process? End of quotes for the painting. It's like repair to like sills that they find damaged when they scrape it and those kind of things. And siding, so that's all right to do that as one piece, right?
I would, I would say so, yes. That's not uncommon. You've worked with old buildings, too, that something else will be discovered. If you're putting a budget together, we recommend sometimes an allowance or a unit price. So when they do come across the unexpected, they had put a price to it, and you have that accounted in your budget, so you're not...
Yeah, that's fine. That's my only question. We're very excited about it.
We liked your report.
Yeah. We were very excited. We knew, we knew that when you walk across it, it's a solid building. And, you know, we're glad that you confirmed that. And it's well, well, well worth the maintenance that needs to go into it. Thank you.
And I don't know if you knew there was two floors on the second floor.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
That was a great question about the period of significance and what period to restore it to.
Scottney, why don't you come back to the microphone?
Yeah, I apologize for that. I was going to talk a little bit more about the period of significance and what is an appropriate time to restore it to. The National Register nomination, of course, I mentioned that before. They had the cutoff of 50 years. But when I look at it, I think the significance is from 1863 to 1915 because of the use of that building. Now, there may be another development after 1915 that is important to consider. But when somebody would ask me what period to restore it to, that would be my target, 1915 era. For what it's worth. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to removing the additions? We would probably have to bid that project out because it would be a pretty substantial bid. Do you have any contractors you would recommend we solicit for those bids if we pursue demolition?
I do. I'm thinking out loud about the scale of it. You're, it's going to be tough to bring in a huge contractor like Newman Brothers that are building these multimillion-dollar buildings. And they do great work. They worked on the Iowa State Capitol for many years and tear sales. So they've got quite a portfolio. But yes, we've worked with contractors of all scale. And I've got several that would be probably a good fit for this. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be too challenging.
Okay. And maybe we can follow up. You could send me an email after tonight. That might be helpful, that we could just solicit those bids. My second question is, we are going to get some quotes for the suggested repairs you have in your report. Do you suggest we target any specific contractors for that work? Or is that very general contract work that we could just solicit anybody a bid from?
I'd love to be able to help you if that's appropriate. I, I don't know your city engineer. I know they're here. That might be something that could be done in-house, though.
Okay.
With a walkthrough, walking through with certain contractors or bidders and getting a list together of what is expected, so.
Okay.
Related to that, do you know if there are grants available for this kind of work?
If there are grants available, I'd say yes, the, I think the state of Iowa would be the first entity I would look at. Historic resource programs. And we can direct you onto their website with, and some of their offices that handle that type of grants.
type of grants. I don't think that was a surprising question a lot of people asked.
Yeah, because I mean, if there is for the removal of those pieces, and again, I don't think that's been formally decided on, but if we ever get to that point or we make it into a larger deconstruction and renovation, if there's a way to package this so it's more conducive to grant eligibility, I think that's where we, I mean, again, whether we chunk it up, if we have to fund it ourselves, inevitably, that's probably how we'll have to do it, if we can do it as a larger project and figure out. I love the window that you gave, eighteen sixty-three to, what'd you say, nineteen fifteen, roughly a fifty-year window, as much gathering as we can get to make it look like. And I don't know if it was consistent that whole time or in that window is what I'm most interested in. And if we can, you know, leverage your resources, partner with the Historical Society, partner with the state Historical Society, county, like I talk to whoever we can to exactly your point where, you know, this may be one of the older buildings in the county because there certainly aren't any downtown, so.
Very good. Yeah. I think when you're applying for a grant, it always helps to show the big picture that this is step one and two in a bigger plan. And that always shows the application process that you're thinking ahead. Think about that when you apply.
Does he may also have any other?
Sir, you have a question out here.
Well, Rob was asking about pictures.
So can you stand up because I can't hear you?
I'm sorry. Rob was asking about pictures. And this one that's up here, we think because of the windows, the bit was before the stage was built on. Because you can count the windows along the top and down. So that's probably the oldest picture that we have.
Okay.
Okay. Less about the pictures themselves, obviously, to get an idea of where we need to go. And if that's, we don't have images, because we probably don't, right? And it's a best guess of what it would have looked like. That's whatever we can gather to identify what we're targeting.
Yeah, it's kind of mind-boggling to think if this was taken in nineteen eighteen, nineteen fifteen, the building was already over fifty years old.
Yeah.
So we really, to your point, we really don't know what had changed over that time. But this is a pretty awesome building in this photo.
Good, good point.
That was about when Mike started, I think, right?
Is there anything else, council? From Scotty. Anything else you'd like to add? I guess we have another question. Please stand up, will you? Will you please stand up so we can hear you?
Did you see any evidence of termite damage? And if not, did you see any evidence that a contractor had treated that building?
Any, any termite secretment? I've, I did not see any termite damage from what I saw. I've seen termite damage before. I didn't see it. That, it could have been in another corner where we looked at, but no, I didn't. And treatment, you know, the modern treatments, they've got injection points. I didn't see any like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think we have exhausted the topic. So thank you very much for your presentation and your great information. And with that, we'll let you go, I guess.
Okay, thank you again. Great, great to be part of this.
So the next part of the.
Oh, really? Okay. Oh, wow. I've been in a few jobs.
Okay. So item two on our agenda is adjournment. So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. We're adjourned until our six o'clock council meeting. Thank you very much.